Good morning, everybody, and welcome to the Lancaster County Board of Commissioners meeting for Tuesday, January 23rd. I am Todd Wilchin. I am the Chair of the County Board this year. Fellow Commissioners Deb Shore and Bill Avery should be joining us momentarily. I think they're running behind due to traffic and the road conditions. On my right, Fellow Commissioners Roma Amundson and Vice Chair Jennifer Brinkman. Joining us this morning from the County Attorney's Office is Jennifer Holloway. From the County Clerk's office, we have the County Clerk Dan Nolte and Kelly Lundgren. From the County Board Office, we have our Chief Administrative Officer Kara Egan and our Chief Deputy Administrative Officer Anne Ames. Now, if you please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Clerk, if you'd please start the agenda.
Copy of Nebraska Open Meetings Act is located on the wall at the rear of the hearing room. Additionally, copy of all written material to be discussed at today's open meeting is available from the County Clerk's staff at the front of the hearing room. The material can also be viewed on the county's website at lancaster.na.gov. Agenda 1 or minutes, approve of the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held on Tuesday, January 16th, 2018.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from our last Board of Commissioners meeting. Any discussion or corrections? Hearing on, Mr. Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Avery?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Wilchin?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. Number two are claims, approval of all claims processed through January 23rd, 2018.
Move approval of the claims.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve all the claims processed through today. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Wilchin?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. Number three is a special presentation, introduction of Walter Brewer, candidate for appointment as Lancaster County Liaison to the Library Board of Lincoln City Libraries, Pat Leach, Lincoln City Libraries Director.
Morning, members of the...
Stand in front of a mic.
Oh, this one over here, sorry.
That works.
Members of the County Board, my name is Herb Friedman. I'm President of the Lincoln Library Board of Trustees. It's my pleasure to introduce to you our nominee, at least, Walt Brewer, to serve as the County Representative on our board. Mr. Brewer? Any questions, we'd be happy to answer.
Ms. Brewer, if you want to introduce yourself.
Thank you very much, Herb. Chairman Wilkin, members of the Commission, I appreciate being here, and it's quite an honor to stand here before you at such an occasion. I want to thank the Selection Committee for nominating my appointment to this position, which I am so looking forward to. A little background on myself, I'm a native of Beatrice, Nebraska. However, I was quite young when we moved to Lincoln, so I call Lincoln home. I'm a general contractor and have been all my life, have been... We've built a lot of structures in the city of Lincoln throughout the state of Nebraska and elsewhere. Married, have three children, eight grandchildren, and very much enthused about the city of Lincoln and Lancaster County in itself. Since I have done a lot of structures throughout the county, I know the county well, and I know a lot of people within the county, being in the field that I'm in. And so consequently, I am looking forward to this appointment. Any questions? I would be happy to try to answer them.
Any question for Mr. Brewer?
Brewer, yeah, wrong old.
Commissioner Shore?
Particular interest in the libraries? Are you a reader, family readers?
I'm a reader, yes. I'm an urban fan reader. I don't get to read as much as I usually like to, but I have read a lot, a lot of specifications that I think over the years. And I do want to thank, have a special thank you for Pat and Herb Friedman being on the committees for the Selection Department.
Commissioner Avery?
Welcome. Didn't you serve on the Board previously or currently on the Board?
Well, no, I'm on the Building Advisory Committee at the moment, Mr. Avery, and was selected, but I'm outside of the city limits.
I remember reading your resume, you were a foster parent to 14 children?
Yes, my wife and I, my wife is an orphan from New York originally and very keen on orphans. We do quite a lot of things civically. We've been quite active in the Lincoln Symphony, a lot to do with dance and the arts, opera, the quilts, and go on and on. Our foster program has been something that we've done for many, many, many years, not recently, of course, but we did raise 14 foster children in addition to our own children. And we are also very deeply involved as a construction company in the prisoner release work program. And currently, we have one of the members working for us around the yard. We have a little horse ranch out on the southwest part of town, and we're very keen on anything civic. I served on the Lincoln Building Advisory Committee for, I think, some 25 years here before it was reinstated again, so I have been involved quite a bit in the governmental agency. I'm a former lobbyist, I was the Executive Director for Associated General Contractors and Nebraska Building Chapter for six years after I retired for about the 10th time, and I'm still, we're still active doing projects.
Impressive.
Thank you very much.
Commissioner Amundson?
I just really don't have any questions, but I do have a comment. You know, we're really fortunate to have you on the Board.
Pardon me?
We will, we are going to be really fortunate to have you on the Library Board. You have such wide expertise, such wide interest in activities, and so we will appreciate it.
Well, I appreciate that very much, and thank you.
Okay, no, and I agree. I want to thank you for your continued public service to the county and to the city.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, Mr. Clerk, would you please see the agenda, I have number 4A.
This is under new business, appointment of Walter Brewer as the Lancaster County Liaison to the Library Board of the Lincoln City Libraries for a seven-year term.
I move that Walter Brewer be appointed as the Lancaster County Liaison to the Library Board.
Okay.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to appoint Walter Brewer. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Wilchin?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Next is 4B, Comprehensive Plan Conformance Number 17016, in a matter of adopting the one and six-year road and bridge construction program for Lancaster County fiscal years 2018 and 2019 through 2023.
Pam Dingman, Lancaster County Engineer. So, as you're aware, it's been, I think, about eight weeks now since we met and had the one and six. As time has proceeded, I bring before you the matter of adopting the one and six. However, you may note a couple of things on there. The primary thing is that I'm switching out 98th Street and putting it in years two through six and replacing that project in next year's plan with 54th Street. I did cite my reasons for that in my letter, however, for the public and the rest of the people here today, the main, some of the main reasons are, and it kind of fits overall with the philosophy at which I have taken county engineering forward and said, let's stop grading roads if we're not going to have the funds to pave them right away. And so 98th Street was graded in 2006. There are a number of regulations, design-wise, that have changed since then. In addition to that, there's a flood plain and floodway that have been platted adjacent to 98th Street. So because of that, that affects our drainage structures and requires us to do some pretty extensive modeling with the stormwater flows through there in conjunction with stormwater management. And as we, as the city requested us to shift the pavement 10 feet off of the center line, we also have an obstacle clearance problem with a number of those drainage structures as well as some vertical curve problems due to design changes in standards and protocol. So I'm kind of sad about it, but I don't feel that we should rush that project to construction without having all of these things taken care of, and these things are going to take some time. So I have pushed that project to FY '19, and we'll go ahead and work on 54th Street next year. I did also want to address, we had a number of citizens that came forward with concerns about West A. And I agree, humbly agree with every single one of them, that it makes the most sense to join the city and construct through the intersection. However, that being said, we simply don't have the funding in the next five years with our current, with the way our funding is currently laid out to do that project. And so I have spoke to the city about it, as well as the citizen who brought it forward and was very concerned about it, and I guess I don't, he is aware of our situation, so I don't want you to think that I'm leaving anyone hanging out there thinking that that project was going to be added in that two through six. Are there any other questions?
Commissioner Shore?
Estimated cost of that project?
I'm sorry.
Estimated cost of the West A?
You know, I would really kind of just be shooting from the hip if I was to throw out a price. The city would really like us to construct a traffic circle there and then transition the pavement in either direction back from the width of a traffic circle. My initial thoughts from looking at it was that it was probably around $750,000 worth of work. But again, I am, I'm really shooting from the hip. It would require right-of-way and storm drainage and several other things, so it would be quite extensive.
Commissioner Brinkman?
Talk a little bit about the Southwest Second Project that was not listed in any of the one and six lists we saw for the hearing and is now going to be done this year.
Well, you may be a fan of the Southwest Second Project when I tell you what the deal is with it. So in conjunction with the NRD and the NCRS, there is a dam located, located near Southwest Second Street. In fact, Southwest Second Street, when the dam was originally built, was kind of relocated because it didn't, because we would have been taking part of it up a dam embankment, and it didn't meet standards. And so the NRD is going to reconstruct that dam. It has some issues right now, and when they reconstruct it, the road won't meet any modern criteria of which we could get a design waiver for from the NDOT. So we're going to change the alignment of that road. We have supplied the design for that road to the NRD, and in conjunction with that, they are going to purchase the right-of-way for that and build the road. So that is a no-cost-to-the-county project.
So that leads me to another question, which is that if we are taking 98th Street off this coming construction season, which was estimated at around $1.5 million, and that in adding South 54th Street, which is estimated at $1 million, why can't we set aside $500,000 to talk about West A?
Well, thank you for that question, Commissioner Brinkman. If you're to go back and you're to look at the object codes in my budget, which is really drilling down to the details, you might notice under the object code of bituminous pavement, also known as asphalt, that the budget line item number is $188,000 there. So in order to get to where we were going to even be able to do 54th Street or 98th Street going forward, what I had to do was cut some right-of-way that I wanted to buy for future projects during this current year and to cut a number of design projects and engineering studies. And so we're struggling just to come up with the $1 million. What I had, how we were going to go forward with 98th Street is with an alternate bid, two miles, and then one mile as the alternate bid, should we be able to squeeze enough of our other projects to get, to get, to get that out of it? But it was, it was always iffy whether we were going to be able to get to that third mile of 98th Street because of the $188,000 in the bituminous pavement object code.
I'm going to go back and talk about the South 98th Street, because I think this was something that we've been talking about for quite some time. I know that there were a lot of people that were living in this area that were looking forward to having South 98th Street paved this year. Can you talk, because you didn't mention earlier the issues surrounding the MOPAC trail crossing?
That's true.
Because in conversations that I've had, that's, I think, another issue that's come up since we had the one and six hearing eight weeks ago.
That is true. I did, I did leave that off my list. So I do have a letter from Lincoln Parks requesting that the MOPAC Trail in the area of 98th Street be relocated. I have told the Parks Department I have some concerns about that because I don't want this trail crossing to appear urban in any way. We have a number of other crossings as the trail goes east that cross at a diagonal. I also believe that at this location, the trail is not Lincoln City Parks jurisdiction, but an NRD jurisdiction issue. And so Parks has concerns about that. You know, and this is part, part of the issue that has made 98th Street so complex for construction is that it really is, I'm going to call it a little past the urban fringe. I'm surprised that it didn't show up in all the recent annexations to be pulled into the city because it is really an urban corridor. And so the request and some of the things that are going on with it are really things we see in the urban environment. To straighten the trail and look at it, that really isn't something that my organization, I believe, should get into. Not that I'm not pro-trail, but that I believe our main concern, especially with our limited funding, needs to be our bridges and our paved roads and the maintenance of those facilities. So that's just one more complex thing. I do know that in the overall planning of subdivisions in the area, that the trail will be relocated in the future, in particular in the A Street corridor just, just north of where the current crossing is on 98th Street. And so I think there's some overall planning that needs to be done here, and I'm going to say I don't think the planning is Lancaster County Engineering's departments.
So going back to your earlier comment, you think that we'll be able to resolve all the issues, or I should say you would be able to resolve all the issues with the design structures involving the cross-section as well as the drainage structures, as well as the trail crossing, and have it all done next year?
I would be hopeful of that, that we can resolve those issues. Again, as this corridor continues to be closer and closer to urban development and actually has several pieces of it that are now within a preliminary plat for urban development, I think there will continue to be additional design issues.
And how many, what's the average daily count?
Towards the south end, it has ebbed. We have counted it the last two years. I believe we have counts in the 720 cars per day.
Any other questions? Okay, I entertain a motion.
I will move approval of the Comprehensive Conformance Plan 17016.
Move approval, or second, I should say.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the Comprehensive Plan Conformance for the one and six road and bridge construction program for the county. Any discussion? Commissioner Brinkman?
I think going through this process has just reiterated and made clearer to me the reason why we are engaging in a study over the next six months to talk about financing for infrastructure. Some cases, it may be resources, in some cases it may be prioritization, and in others it might have a relation to how we set up the funds that then result in how we prioritize these projects. So I'm going to vote for this and want to reiterate that work on West A by the city is not anticipated to be done for another three or four years. I know design and right-of-way acquisition takes time, but I will continue to advocate that we participate in that project in some way.
And I'll follow up on what Commissioner Brinkman said, is that going back a number of years, what Russ was designed to do, which is the rural-to-urban transit streets, transition streets, I mean, this is kind of highlights what the challenges we have in that on the fringe of the city where you have the county, there's a lot of infrastructure needs that need to be addressed. And I think it's time that we address them and hopefully find a solution to the challenges. So, any other?
Okay, with that, Mr. Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Amundson?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Wilchin?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. C is a special designated license application for Nebraska FFA Foundation for an event to be held on February 11th, 2018, at Capital View Winery and Vineyard, 2361 Whitser Road, Roquan, Nebraska.
Good morning.
Good morning. I'm Sarah Mullen. I'm with the Nebraska FFA Foundation. I'm the Development and Marketing Manager there. So they asked me to come and just tell you a little bit about the event we're hosting at Capital View Winery and Vineyards. We've hosted these events one other time in different counties, and so this is kind of, this is how it ran last year, I'll give you an example. The event will be held at, from 6:30 to 8:30. We have participants that will purchase tickets. Those tickets will grant them 10 tasting tickets at the door. There will be three wineries there donating tastings to us, so they will not be making any money off of their, they will be donating the tastings for us. We will also be purchasing bottles of wines from those wineries and selling them at the event, so that's the reason we need the special designated license that day. We'll also have food appetizers there for our guests, and it's really just a gathering of supporters of Nebraska FFA Foundation.
With that, I would give you the opportunity to talk a little bit about the foundation, if you'd like.
Sure, sure. I don't know how many of you know what FFA is or were involved with it, but it's a school-based organization for students with agricultural education. It's in our schools, there's agriculture education classes as part of it, there's the FFA part, which is the leadership development, and then there's also supervised agricultural experiences that these students are part of, and those are experiences where these students can get hands-on learning. And so the FFA Foundation exists to support all three of those areas. We support various activities, both at the statewide level, which you see here in Lincoln as State FFA Convention, the Blue Coats come to town every April. There's also leadership workshops that they're hosting, and there's also support that we provide for the local FFA chapters through local chapter grants and different activities like that.
Thank you. Commissioner Avery?
I am actually a former member of FFA many years ago. And I don't remember that alcohol sales were ever part of our activities. How new is this?
This is hosted by the FFA Foundation, so we're a completely separate organization from the association.
But you exist for FFA?
Yes, we do. We, so it's, a lot of the guests there are alumni, like yourself, that are coming to more network. We don't even have FFA members present at the events.
Okay.
For that very purpose.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Okay.
I will move approval of the SDL for the Nebraska FFA.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the SDL for Nebraska FFA Foundation. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Wilchin?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Before you leave, if people are interested in buying tickets, how would they go about doing that?
You can find them on our website at nefafoundation.org.
Thank you.
Thank you.
4D is a special designated license application for Junto Wine LLC for an event to be held on February 11th, 2018, at Capital View Winery and Vineyard at 2361 Whitser Road, Roquan, Nebraska.
Good morning.
Hey, how's it going? Well, we're obviously one of the wineries for the event, so we're going to be attending and doing tastings and selling wine to them, obviously. So I think to answer your question that you had for her, Mr. Avery, wineries and vineyards in Nebraska are kind of a new thing, but it is agrotourism, and it's kind of a different outlet of tourism for, for people in Nebraska, something that they can do that also includes agriculture. We like to consider ourselves farmers in a lot of ways. You know, we're out there working in the vineyard, maintaining the vineyard, and then we have to turn that into a product, which is wine. So it's really unique agriculture, it's a little different than corn and soybeans, but it's kind of unique, but it's a, it's a lot of fun, and I think there's a lot of future in wineries in the state.
Could you introduce yourself?
Oh, sorry, John Seibert. I'm with Junto Winery, brought by Seward.
I assumed you were with the vineyard, but I didn't know your name.
Yep, sorry.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Yes.
Commissioner Avery?
Are you fairly new? I don't think I've heard of it.
We open in, it'll be four years in May. We opened in May of 2014.
And you're in what county?
Seward County.
Seward County.
Yep, between Lincoln and Seward, if you know where Garland is, kind of in the Garland area. Yep.
They have a really nice party space. I've been out there for...
Thank you.
A bridal shower.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Otherwise, I entertain a motion.
Okay, I move approval of the SDL for Junto Wine.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the SDL for Junto Wine. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Shore?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Wilchin?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Is a maintenance agreement with Microfilm Imaging Systems, Inc., an amount of $922 for a Canon scanner located in the Clerk of the District Court's office, term of the agreement is February 1st, 2018 to January 3rd, 1st, 2019.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the maintenance agreement with Microfilm Imaging Systems. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Wilchin?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. F is an agreement between American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, Local 2468, and Lancaster County for the contract term August 17th, 2017 through August 30th, 2018.
Good morning, Commissioners. Doug McDaniel, Human Resources, bring this labor agreement to you for approval. It's a one-year agreement with AFSMI in engineering. The economic impact is a 1.5% increase to wages.
Questions? Commissioner Brinkman?
So having read the agreement for the first time and not having any text changes, there were no text changes beyond anything related to the wage increase, correct?
There were some minor text changes related to the number of stewards, also a designation for the director. It was a carryover from the previous AFSMI contract, and AFSMI was a much larger union, so there were two minor text changes that were non-economic.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions for Mr. McDaniel? Commissioner Avery?
Is it normal or usual that we have a one-year contract instead of a two in this case?
Well, we always seek to get a two-year agreement if we can. Sometimes the parties can't agree on economic developments in the contract, and so therefore we were able to get a one-year agreement, and that was the limitation.
And one-year agreement in this case was easier to reach?
It's what the parties agreed to.
Yeah. You sound like a lawyer.
Any other questions?
I'll remain silent to that.
Move approval of the agreement.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the agreement with AFSMI Engineering. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Wilchin?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. 4G is a recommendation from the Purchasing Department and Emergency Management toward a contract to Schmader Electric for an outdoor warning siren and insulation. The cost at county is $26,975.
I've got an eight-and-a-half by 11 display I'd like to share with you that will give an idea of the sirens that have been added since late 2014. The siren that's before you today is going to be placed at Pioneer's Park. The old siren behind the Pinewood Bowl stage had to be relocated due to some expansion and reconstruction they're doing out there, so it was an opportune time to remove that old siren and replace it with a brand-new solar-powered one. So that's what the item before you today, but if you can see the red triangles, those are the ones that have been added since 2014. The one at the top is at Raymond Central High School. at the top is at Raymond Central High School. Again, due to some construction out there, the old one had to be moved, so the, the first opportunity, we had to buy a new one, and then kind of keep an, an idea to make sure we evenly distribute them among the county. After Raymond Central, we added one near 84th and Yankee Hill Road. It's actually on property of St. Michael's Catholic Church. That gave us some coverage for a, a growing and developing area in southeast Lancaster County. The next two were both northeast. We added one at 52nd and Arbor Road due to a pretty substantial residential development there. The next one was at the Lancaster Event Center. The current Event Center property was just on the fringe of a lot of the sirens we had in the general area, looking to the near future, especially with the high school rodeo being out there in a couple of years. I took advantage of the opportunity to install a siren there last year, and then, as I said, we needed to, to make a change at Pioneer's Park. But hopefully, that gives you an idea of the most five recent sirens. We've got a pretty good distribution among the county.
Yeah, thank you. Any questions for Mr. David Avery?
Move approval, second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to award the contract for a new outdoor warning siren. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Wilton?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. H is an accessory building agreement with J. Corver Revocable Trust for property general located at 17381 Pella Road.
Move approval, second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the accessory building agreement. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Wilton?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. 4I is an agreement with the Lincoln Marriott Cornhusker Hotel to provide meeting room and services for the Lancaster County Employee Recognition Breakfast on May 22, 2018, including catering and service fees. The cost of county is $17.08 per attendee.
Move approval, second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the agreement with the Cornhusker Hotel. Any questions? Please call the roll.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Wilton?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. J is a cooperative agreement with the U.S. Department of Interior, U.S. Geological Survey for joint funding of water resource investigations. The agreement is for the operation and computation of records for four stream flow gauging stations, which are Salt Creek, Little Salt Creek near Lincoln, Stevens Creek near Lincoln, and Rock Creek near Suresco. The county will pay $12,710 for the services. Term of the agreement is October 1, 2017, through September 30, 2018.
Pam Dingman, Lancaster County Engineer. These are gauges that are located in the major drainageways that drain into our county. And for those of you who may be Johnny Cash fans, may remember the song, "How High is the Water?", right? So, you can actually go onto these gauge sites and sign up for text messages that will tell you when the water gets to whatever level you feel is of concern to you. We use the gauge information in the EOC to figure out when the water is coming and, and how deep it is. It has been extraordinarily helpful to the county in planning for flooding. And so, if any of you would like to see the mobile site or see how it works, I would be happy to show it to you outside of the meeting. And if you'd like to get those texts every hour through the night when the county's flooding, you, you can do that.
Any questions for Ms. Dingman?
Move approval of the agreement, second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the cooperative agreement with the U.S. Department of Interior, U.S. Geological Survey. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Shore?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Wilton?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. K is an amendment to county contract C-17-357 with Constructors, Inc., for asphalt and resurfacing projects in 2017. The amendments extend the completion date from November 1, 2017, to April 1, 2018, due to circumstances beyond the control of the contractor.
Move approval, second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to amend the contract with Constructors. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Wilton?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. L is a contract with Lincoln Digestive Health Center, LLC for the specialized medical care of general assistance clients. The provider will be reimbursed at the Medicaid rate.
Move approval, second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the contract with Lincoln Digestive Health Center. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Wilton?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. 4M is an amendment, an amendment to county contract C-13-316 with Pepsi-Cola for, of Lincoln for vending services for Lancaster County and the Public Building Commission. The amendment is to add vending services to the K Street complex.
Move approval, second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to amend the county contract with Pepsi-Cola of Lincoln. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Wilton?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. 4N is an amendment to county contract C-17-181 with Sunset Law Enforcement for the annual supply of ammunition. The amendment renews the contract for an additional one-year term beginning March 7, 2018, through March 6, 2019. The cost to county is not to exceed $45,000.
Move approval, second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to amend the contract with Sunset Law Enforcement. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Wilton?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. O is an amendment to county contract C-17-319 with Hallworth, Inc., using the U.S. Community as contract number 440003402 for office furniture and related services. The amendment renews the contract from January 1, 2018, through December 31, 2018. The estimated cost to county is not to exceed $20,000.
Move approval, second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to amend the contract with Hayward, Inc. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Wilton?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. P is an amendment to county contract C-17-33 with Murphy Tractor and Equipment for skid stair loader rentals. The amendment renews the contract from February 1, 2018, to January 31, 2019. The estimated cost to county, which includes a price increase, is not to exceed $5,500.
Move approval, second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the contract with Murphy Tractor and Equipment. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Wilton?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Q are amendments to the following contracts to provide the annual supply of ice melt. The amendments renew the contracts for a term beginning in February 18, 2018, through February 17, 2019. And this includes county contract C-17-182 with Helen and Chemical Company in an amount not to exceed $3,500. County contract C-17-183 with Nebraska Landscape Solutions, Inc., in an amount not to exceed $3,500. And county contract C-17-184 with Omaha Paper Company, in an amount not to exceed $3,000.
Move approval, second.
Okay, we have a, a motion and a second to amend three contracts for the annual supply of ice melt. Any discussion? Commissioner Avery?
I have a question. I'm curious as to how and why a paper company is selling ice melt. Doesn't sound normal.
Diversification, I assume.
Could be. I'm not going to vote against it, but I just find that strange.
I, I would, yeah, I would agree. Probably diversification and the fact that sometimes business names don't coincide with what they actually do. And so, I, I'm assuming that maybe there's money to be made in ice melt.
Maybe they started out with paper and wound up with ice.
Okay, any other discussion? Please call the roll.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Wilton?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Their website says that they provide janitorial supplies, so that must be part-
That's the paper connection.
That's the paper connection.
Next is number five, public comment. Those wishing to speak on items relating to county business not on the agenda may do so at this time.
Hey, anyone in the audience wishing to speak on an item not on the agenda? Okay, Mr. Clerk, please continue with the announcements.
The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will hold a staff meeting on Thursday, January 25, 2018, at 8:30 a.m. in the Bill Luxford Studio of the County City Building. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will hold their next regular meeting on Tuesday, January 30, 2018, at 9 a.m. in Room 112 of the County City Building. The county commissioners can be reached at 402-441-7447, or commish@lancaster NE.gov. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners